Twenty four, um we're going to excuse Tom Hanson. Quick little call of his here. Mary, go ahead.
Barry, Barry and Bill.
Or Jay Horace.
Jay.
Jason L. Business.
Good job.
W. Word.
Can't believe A did it.
A?
Yeah.
And? Can't believe A swat.
So, Bernadette.
Good job.
Well, I guess let's get after it. We don't have a lot to talk about. We did have a full cancellation on us tonight, so we'll move into, I guess, operations director in charge, Sean Kelly. Okay, come up to the, come up to the dais.
About the pool. First one's the pool.
Fees, right?
We have a couple of things with the pool board. Uh, I'll display my screen here. The first thing I think we want to talk about were the usage of the pool.
And does anybody swim in our county?
They do.
Do they?
So, our staff, so you didn't make that, you didn't do a slot and right, that little slider down.
Long.
That pause?
No, that, the right side.
Oh.
Go back to.
We track every day what's going on, usages of the pool.
So, you're.
So, maybe right there. January, go back to the slider. We keep track every day, maybe Tuesday, Wednesday, Thursday, Friday, obviously Sunday we're not open. We have lap swimming, water aerobics, zumba, rusty joints, all the masters, that, that'll, those are the older gentlemen or ladies who are doing lap swimming. Competitively, they have a little program where they do masters, uh, lap swimming, open plunge, you can see total patrons, I think is maybe where we want to talk about. So, you can see in the month, here's the total patrons. Along with the high school swimming and the comp swimming, that's the age group kids who use the pool. And so, they keep extensive records of what's, what's going on every day. So, in February, you can see total patrons.
So, five thousand three hundred in February.
And in January, sixty one forty two. March, so we have to pull out. Fifty four hundred. April, forty two hundred. Swim team is over. That's probably a big amount of children, but still a significant number in the, in the comp. And then so far in May, he hasn't finished that.
So, those are the people that walk to the gate and pay whatever fee to go to the.
Yeah. So, some of them have daily passes, some of them have monthly passes, some of them have yearly passes. The high school team obviously is on a different schedule. The comp, swim team, they bypass us, we charge them to come and use the pool. Uh, our classes are being more and more popular, the rusty joints, the zumba, the water aerobics. We have a lot of people in the middle of the day when the patrons aren't using it to do lap swimming as much. But the classes are very popular, the water aerobics, the zumba, rusty joints. You can see per class, they have thirty kids, thirty adults in that one. My mother now goes up there, she's eighty one years old. Gets, gets in the pool, does rusty joints. There's probably twenty or thirty people in her class that she does. So, I think the pool is being utilized. Could there be more people? Obviously, yes. But you go there at night, there's, there's kids in it, there's families in it. Uh, we used to get a few complaints about the temperature of the water. That's subsided quite a bit. The room temperature is really warm on that activity side. And the pool stands about eighty one to eighty three degrees without water.
Well, they have to keep it cooler anyway for the swim team.
This is the activity side.
Oh.
The, the competition side, we want the water cooler because the swimmers complain if it's not. I'm talking about the activity. We never have complaints about the competition side, temperature wise.
You know, the temp that they wanted at the competition, people do.
I don't. It's in the eight, like, yeah, seventy nine, eighties. The other side's about five or six degrees.
Do they still do the blow up?
Yes, the wivets. We put the wivets out. It depends on what's going on. At water polo, it's a water polo, obviously you can't put the wivets in. And that's at night. The comp, water polo, boys and girls, practice every night. That season has concluded, so now in the summer they put the wivets in the, in both sides.
Where are we with the wonderful splash pad?
Splash pad was turned on Memorial Day. And it's a service with the pool. You have to pay your membership fee and in the summer it's utilized frequently. There's families and young kids out there. The water's cold, that's the complaint we get. However, there's no way for us to heat it, just the temperature of the day would heat the water up because it's just be circulated in a system itself. We don't get new water in it every day or fill the pool up. With the, you know, with the nice new trendy thing, the cold plunging, maybe we can start advertising cold plunging instead of the river.
And we do it with bounds.
Yeah. But the, the splash pad gets utilized a good amount in the summer. We'll see the little families out there. We have shade for the moms to lay in while it's receded. Any questions about the pool usage or what the numbers are showing us?
Talk. I would suggest, I think the pool is being used as, as we thought it would be. I think from the time its pools, the pool was built, um, uh, since that time, I, I think things are going well. I, I think it's being used as anticipated. The pool, you know, we're in the, we're in the education business and, and, um, we're obviously as a public entity here in Wasatch County. Um, it, it's a, it's a service that we, that we provide for the community, to the service that the Board of Education provides for. To have a, a nice facility and when, when we were able to split the competition side, the recreation side and have two different temperatures, that was a, that was a big deal, a big improvement for our community, making both groups happy. And, um, I don't think we, we don't, we've never looked at the pool as a moneymaker. I think everybody understands that pools are, are, uh, there, there's really no scenario out there that, that the pool makes a lot of money. We see people try that, um, out in, you know, different communities.
We tried it out.
It's just not, it's just a, it just doesn't work. It's not in the equation, but, um,
It's not for a service.
Just, just like, uh, just like the tax, um, payers fund our school system. Um, they, I mean, that's how we fund the pool. It becomes a, a community service at a, at a reduced rate. And just like folks can rent our buildings at a reduced rate, um, as long as they're not renting them for their own, their own profit. And, and it's a whole different, and it's a whole different list of, uh, fees that we charge. So, I think we're in a good spot with the group. I, I think that, uh, we continue on as is and, and let our community continue to enjoy the pool. Five thousand people a month are at the pools. It's a very good.
Do they have comparable facilities in our state like, like this that, that carry the school district?
Well, I think, uh, I think there are some, um, I think there, there are definitely some and, and I couldn't name them all to you. We do all that inside and out.
Going into it.
I'll tell you, for Tana, the school district has a pool at their high school. So, like Cypress High School, they're building a pool. But it's not the same community activity. It's a competition pool for the competition high school teams. So, the high school's running it. It's not open to the public. It's strictly a Lucas House model. Of course, Tana, the school district has a pool at every high school. I will tell you that our pool is used for our competition kids for high school. We have, have region tournaments. We also have other region tournaments that we charge the other regions to use. Uh, ours, the swim club uses it. And we host swim age group events as well for our kids to use just like Little League baseball or Little League wrestling. Whatever it is, we have a little comp program for our competition stretch. It's very popular. And we have a couple hundred kids in that age group competition.
Are the elementary schools, the middle school still going there?
Some. We don't have the swim program like we used to where we take the kids, but like the, the junior highs, we'll take their kids over their P E. We'll have a unit in swimming. They take them. Our special needs, our running lab kids will go there during the day and have a swim program and teach them. So, we use it for educational purposes during the day as well.
Any questions?
Do you want to talk about fees at all?
Okay.
No, that's.
All right. Yeah, what's, what's the point? I mean, are they on their end saying, we could charge more to use it?
Well, I think the superintendent hit this, hit it well when he said, I think the pool is doing what we want it to. And our patrons are happy and we understand that it's not something that we're doing to make money. And our fees are low compared to like campus rec center as well or the Pro Bowl rec center. So, I think our patrons are appreciative, uh, of that. As you know, costs go up, salaries go up. And our fees have remained constant. I think that's a nice gesture that we help the community with. Uh, so.
There may be a time in the future when.
If you had an idea, it's five blocks to go.
They're, they've been the same since.
A month or a year is two hundred and five. So, I think we're, we're in good shape.
Okay.
Job study now?
Yeah, let's move on.
Okay, as you know, for our job study, um, we did a job study a year ago in the spring. We partnered with Park City and Canlis, South Summit School District to create a job study. We, uh, had that back, have that back now. Park City and South Summit got theirs a little bit before ours, but we have now wrapped up that study. We have the results. I'm going to show you a couple of things quickly. Uh, Hulte is working earlier. As part of this package, they gave us software. And so, I have a software called Jobs Plus. The company that did this stu- study for us was called EMS. So, we contracted with EMS to do a comprehensive job study, uh, every job that we have. And I'll get into that a little bit more. We have this software that I'm just learning that will help us run reports and do some, uh, projects with. I'm going to skip that one out and I'm going to go to two things that I think the board will want to, want to look at. The first one is this job analysis, the market detail. They looked at our jobs compared with similar sized districts. And so, I have this spreadsheet that shows us and it's about what you guys would figure, what your goal was, was to be the number one paying school district in the state. And this job study has reiterated that we are in fact the number one job, uh, highest paying district in the state. The business administrators have a study that they get with all the classified or the certified people, so teachers, that kind of stuff. We have a spreadsheet that shows us what our teachers are compared with every forty one districts and we're number one in that. This job, however, studied, we focused more on our classified people. They, they were asking for that. So, when we look at classified people, our support service people, our cooks, our custodians, you can see again that the number one, their column number two is the minimum. We have a mid, we have a max. We're listed at the top and then Duchaine, for instance, or Iron, Morgan, Murray, Ogden. Park City would be there, right up there with us or a little bit higher in our classified. Custodians, you can see it gives the steps of the salary schedule. Our minimum for a custodian is twenty three, our mid is twenty nine. Our high topping would be thirty five fifty eight. We have twenty five steps. And the only one that is similar to that would be Park City. And we're, we're really close on that. Our secretaries, same thing. Our bus drivers, we're at the top of the bus drivers. The only one close to us is Park City. These are our head custodians, uh, our kitchen people, our cooks. As like you go through this, and I won't go through it line by line, but I will tell you, the board has done a magnificent job of making Wasatch number one in academics and number one in teacher and certified and classified paying because every one of them were, were at the top. I have another, uh, market detail that will show us a couple, what's this? Comparative to not districts, but job market. What's our market analysis with, you know, working for the county or working for Epic Ski Resort. And we're right in the ball, ballgame for that as well. Uh, this will show you that and I'll skip to, like, our, our number entry level, if you will, is our P A one. So, this line right here is our P A one. That's our entry level. And with this market analysis, if you see the red, that means we're a little low. And then they give us a recommendation. So, for P A one, they recommend fifteen eighty two to twenty one ninety nine. I will open the salary schedule. You'll be able to see for the P A one, we start at fifteen forty-two and we go to twenty-two ninety-six. So we're pretty close to what their recommendation was for our early en- that's our entry level job. Our P A ones are our, that's the lowest we go. Uh lifeguards, we moved them to fifteen bucks an hour, but they're not on the par, any sweepers, uh grounds crew, our is fifteen dollars an hour. But for our entry level classified admin or not our admin, educational support service people, fifteen forty-two is what we paid last year. So within that market range that they recommended. Here is the market recommendations, the analysis, the green means we are above the market analysis for other jobs. I don't know how or who they talked to, you can see our custodian, which ironically we have the hardest time hiring when we're hiring these types of people. Our maintenance, our custodians, those are the two people that we struggle the most with applicants because they can go to Epic or they can go work for the city or county. We're very competitive with the county now and the city, but when they go to Park City, to Epic or Deer Valley and work in maintenance there, they're a little bit higher. However, our number one thing that we have here that nobody else can touch is insurance.
I just gotta ask that.
This doesn't factor in, this is just a base. That's their thing. And I'm telling you, our insurance is blowing everybody out of the water as far as teachers, admin and our people that get insurance. Our bus drivers get it, our cooks get it, our secretaries.
Why do you think custodian is a higher cost than custodian?
Driving the food.
That's.
Is it a higher cost?
So live here.
Yeah, because they're driving to Park City and working for Deer Valley, housekeeping and they're getting insurance, but they're getting a little bit more per hour and.
Which is what their principal is okay.
But our our insurance is a game changer, I wanna reiterate that. If we're paying twenty-five bucks an hour and giving them a full benefit package of insurance, they take it. We just hired two or three maintenance people about six months ago and all of them came because of the insurance, because it's saving money in a payroll premium deduction. And the teachers, this I know we're mostly centered on our classified group, our teachers is a game changer. What we're doing with insurance and teachers is changing. It's amazing how like what, you do what? It's a big, it's a big recruiting tool. I mean, when we go to the the fairs, the job fairs with teachers, that's one thing I make sure we put on as big as we can. P E H P, premium deduction, zero, and it's a big thing. So that's the job analysis. The one thing I would tell you in closing of this, unless you have questions, the one thing that this also has given us is job descriptions that are professionally written. It's just not us typing up, hey, I think you can do this or this or that. We have professional job descriptions that are congruent with other districts and industry for every one of these jobs and I've started to use them. So overall, I think the job study was a benefit to the district. It should have reiterated and gave evidence to what we already believe. And so now we have a document that we can use to show we need to, that our salaries are higher.
Eight percent that we did for classified last year were um inactive, was was a really broad sampling for this other group. We we didn't know for sure where that would put us, we knew it was a big step for us and and we've noticed a a difference, you know, from Sean and the principals have talked about. It hasn't been easier to hire since that eight percent increase last year. And uh we, you know, we talked some of us to where that would put us and the job study is telling us that it puts us in really good shape. Puts us at the top more and fewer. And that's one thing should some of the folks that do take these higher paying jobs, there is there's only five percent. I mean, they they're insurance, they're in an insurance position, a state retirement position. It really should be a no-brainer for them because, you know, there's very, very few jobs that offer a non contributory retirement like like we do. So if you're if you're going to Deer Valley and you're giving up, it's uh you're giving up the benefit package for a couple dollars an hour.
Is is this a good, uh probably be bring this up, is this a is this a good opportunity to talk about how we take coaches in this situation? This is different, I understand, but is there a, is there a?
So our coaches, I think something has changed dramatically, we tied it to their salary. So they get a percentage of their salary, so it's not just you get four thousand dollars and it stays at four thousand dollars forever for your stipend. As their schooling increases, as their salary increases, their coaching salary increases as well.
As.
Jason might have. Yeah. So the people who are non-teachers, do you have an eye? I'm not sure how, what we base that or what what we would have been.
What you meant is this.
You're right, we tied it to, we we're giving them the same increase that we give the teachers this year. It's not tied to their specific salary, it's just on a salary schedule that goes up and the base number on that we increase each year based on what the teachers give in the salary schedule. So it goes up, like Sean was saying, as the teacher salary goes up, it's not directly tied to there.
It's that amount or there at least.
So we have as a salary schedule.
And that's pretty much standard in our state too, that goes for everybody, that's the same thing they do it. If he's a non-state person, I mean, a non-teacher person, he's a community person who's come in and that.
Jason might have a better sense of that and I do. What I what I would tell you is our coaches are getting paid towards the top of the state in seventy score for their service. And we're not lying, we had Ryan looked at that pretty closely a year or two ago and.
We're, we're.
We have to, we have to be.
We're.
Yeah. We're higher than most. Better, and there might be one or two outliers there, but as you talk to coaches and recruit coaches, we're still significantly better than most. Could we be better? Obviously, always, yes.
The coach just gave what's he's made, five million dollars.
Lot, so much.
That's highest paid coach in the state, you know, for doing five million.
Wow. That's interesting, do I usually, am I interested in basketball or football?
It is.
That's really interesting. Everybody's gone off basketball, not football.
Why?
So going back to the job study, so the data that they used for this is before we gave last year's state's script.
Right. So it's a challenge, most of us, there are some things that we can anticipate, but most of them, salaries. And I can see what the teacher uh. We sent Salomon, I think, who was a head custodian at high school.
It was about the same time and we could have sent him the new.
It kinda seems like we didn't send him the new salary schedule.
So I didn't.
You know, you know what we did, when we met with them, they uh they.
Yeah, I see.
Sorry.
So that's.
When they when they did, they had the old one, but after we met with them the first time, we sent them the new salary schedules and they updated it. There's still a few, like the O T P team we talked about, it's still low because that hasn't been updated. So I told you.
So if we update our speech languageologist, they're not.
They're they're higher than that, they wouldn't be that low.
Starting.
They're sixty-seven thousand starting instead of sixty-five.
Any questions, anything else?
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you. I've got just a little bit of time, um if there are.
Yeah, you you can take this any direction you'd like, if you wanna, if you wanna do. Topics for the session.
Board has been having table discussions, if there's, if you have any time and you wanna, um I would maybe suggest uh asking Assistant Superintendent Peterson to maybe give us a. Uh he has a little bit of an idea of what or how are how are what the next thing turns out this year. Um nothing, nothing uh solid or anything you can count on, but he, I think he he shares some ideas of what we may, or we at least what we think we're gonna.
Can they can they decorate the dinosaur in town saying we're the best readers of the world?
Oh, it's gonna be, it's gonna be close.
And then.
Um so like, so all these come in for our uh rise data, so three through eight. And then also U A plus data. So we look at and say that we're the highest performing state or who, that to learn from the best until we become the best. Those are the metrics we use, it's the rise score in the U A plus one high school, which is just nine in tenth graders, which we get to eleven and twelve, they're just not part of that. During the A C T, they don't take that in this state assessment point, so it comes actually tenth grade and then third, K two is, you know, the acads basically use this test stuff like that. We're using the N W E A test, a little bit of that there as well, because we want our kids to know what the basic course is. K one to one, one to one, that's for tracking that day as well. For the three through ten, which we track, um it looks like our English, our reading scores are gonna be about exactly what they were last year. So as long as everybody else goes up, we're not really that that great, that's true. Um so people keep doing really well, um uh we saw some teams go up, some teams go down and but overall, it's almost a wash. It looks like that's a very preliminary data, if you remember, we wait till after lock to the first to get the finals. So now we're going to the state, they'll do what they call a cleanup, uh some of those things that might be cleaned up is any kid, uh correctly run line and miss gun that's that is in the country less than a year.
Yeah.
They'll, even though they tested, they'll pull them out. Um so they do that for everybody, so it's just little things like that that they clean them up and say, okay, um uh they probably don't expect, I mean, I got a doctor degree, but if I had to take a end level state test in Spanish in the first year, I didn't get through it. I would do very well, um as I'm told, um those tests, they kind of try to even that just a little bit. Um uh there's some areas that those people can do a little bit better there as well, we just gotta watch that. But again, kind of our our goal is that we learn from the best until we become the best. So we also, we we look at that data for one reason and one reason why, like people drop, whatever, we're not too concerned about it. We're more concerned with the people that are those quite a bit, 'cause they have new knowledge. And that new knowledge, you have to somehow share with everybody else, that's our profession, we don't follow, we want teachers to learn from other teachers. Not in like, oh guys that's in the other form.
I agree.
We believe our experts are our teachers and if we can't get it to go up because we're a smaller district, people will find another team somewhere. Uh Kevin Rich back there and Brad Javel and Todd Johnson are excellent. At when it is state wide, I call out higher teachers, teams that seem to be doing better than everyone else. And so where you would really find those teams is just if you need uh new knowledge, you just get the car, go drive, sit down with that team anymore. So uh we'll go a little bit about this year. Again, really pleased with our reading scores again. I think one of the one of the stressful things is once you reach a certain level, trying to get that to a little more and you kind of get that, again, something bigger to last year. Math which you really don't, um uh in fact, I don't know if that holds, but it's kind of, um I wouldn't say it's shocking because like two teams are so good. But data rises like that don't happen right now um through uh districts. So uh it looks like probably about seven percentage points. Um if you remember last year, we were, I think, third or fourth, but there was a massive distance between like us and cash and us and our summer. And we greatly closed that gap, um if everyone scores the same, maybe not sure just under our summer.
Well, I mean, kind of, I do, but I would say it's bad on that because some people in our community seem to think that we're not doing very well enough, but we are, so.
Yeah, we are, um I guess I would just ask based off what the metrics are, we looking at on that. I think one of the things that will will.
I think they're comparing like state numbers and uh.
Well, they're just, they're misform, that's all there is to it. So if you look, we're third out of four in districts, we jumped to being third and then jumped another seven percentage points in one year, it's just.
I agree. Tell how good.
We don't, we don't like to, to tell that's my lies, we really don't allow it, but I'd love to sit down with anybody on that and just kinda, we saw some really big gains, for instance, in our sophomore math this year. Um just like they they created out of all our.
Was that 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 one?
So, so that's one of the hard things about the high school test, is ninth and tenth grade do not test. So like I went to biology, it wasn't text about biology person, it was specific to science. Um so it's not specific to a subject, which makes it a little bit difficult for our teachers to do what one of you are from another biology teacher. Um so uh you know, they go literally like that, and all our science teams are really keying on the reading and reading scientific, either scientific and test. Understanding tables, graphs, charts, things like that, all science uh material. Um and then they still go after their content, we really mostly do that on the state test in the ninth and tenth grade, third through eighth grade you do. Um uh the ninth and tenth grade assessments, they need to ask kind of a hy- hybrid assessment, they're trying to get a little bit of predictive score. Um for the A C T, probably use the pre-A C T, but I would, in fact, I don't know if anybody uses the state assessment, that's a good question a little bit, that has to be honest with you. Um and then uh uh about third through eighth, they they test every one to try and so. Uh so that's also a s- uh uh the, it's over the top four, four percentage points.
Yes.
Yes, yeah, but again, that that's our really big game, um if you're very close to the other states, so we'll see where everybody else comes in. Kinda got it, we're gonna see if anybody else can upgrade as well to the one or two.
Well, we just, uh who was it, U S B's and we'll report to that state and rank Utah number.
Number three in reading, number two overall in uh education. Um but in K twelve reading, Utah, um and this is a comparison of name score, which is really the only true state to state comparison out there. So um and Utah used to be horrible not that long ago, um bottom half, um you know, a few years back. So the fact that Utah now is scoring um third highest in the in the whole union and the fact that Wasatch was number one in Utah tells you a little bit about where we're at and how well we're in. And we we hesitated um to sing our our own, to toot our own horn much because we've been waiting for these scores to come up like they, we knew they were going to. Um well, it's ha- it's happening now and, you know, we talked about once you win a state championship, our same, harder to to win the first one is to win the second one. And the fact that we even came in at the same level, at least the preliminary data, is is remarkable. You know, it's it's very easy once you hit a real peak to have a a drop the next year, that's almost difficult. And so I think, I think the preliminaries look great, I think they are preliminaries and that's why we're not gonna, we're not gonna celebrate it too much. Um what we will celebrate, and I I hope you can all be um to our our back to school day, when we meet with all our teachers. Because this will be the first time we've had all the teachers in one room and we can celebrate the previous year's scores. And uh we're gonna do that, we're gonna have a, we're gonna have a fun day that day. I'm not sure exactly what it's gonna look like, but I know we got some good people here, we're gonna, they're gonna put together a a big celebration date for Wasatch's first ever, first place in one of, one of the big three.
first place in one of one of the big three um categories. And uh I think this validates, you know, all the things we've been doing, all the hard work that's been going on. We just remember these are these are this is a percentage score, percentage of both of ours. Um when we say there's eight percent of we 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 gained eight percentage points in math for a district of seven thousand students, we do the math on that. It's hundreds and hundreds of kids that are proficient this year in math in Wasatch that were not last year. And that's that's the that's the important part and you know put faces, put the names to the faces of the kids that were not proficient last year and this year they are. It's a life changing for them.
And Charlie Charlie Lewis.
In life, what changes do you mean?
Charlie Lewis is bragging about his
Right, absolutely. It works well. It's 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 catching on. This is what we're about and and success begins success. You know, we we think it's only going in one direction. You know, we'll have our ups and downs and um somebody said it's, you know, it's hard to retreats with the goals in the role and maybe um you know, we'll we'll see what happens. But the fact that we're right there in that area and we we continue moving forward, we've got the best of the of the best leading us and uh we we've got we've got a leadership team, a group of principals, and then just the the whole cockroach, phenomenal, hardworking, talented teachers in this district.
So like you say
It's a special place to be right now.
they're trying to do better. I imagine how you want to learn or how how are they making just a little bit difference.
But I and I think one thing that's a little lost on our legislators, and I hope a bunch of them can hear me right now. Um one thing that's a little lost on our educators is, you know, U S News and World Report ranked number Utah's the number one state living in the union this year. And the highest individual categorical rating is education. And part of that ranking was higher ed and part of it was was K twelve. And uh and for K twelve education in the state of Utah, it'd be third out of fifty states and it's incredible. And our K twelve system does not get enough recognition and enough appreciation from from our legislators and enough credit for the fact that the wonderful economy that we have in this state is due to the high, high levels of education. I think it's it's a it's a no brainer. It's it's something that that uh Sean Kelly likes to say, blind men can see that. So I just, I hope we take these opportunities moving forward um and to recognize what's going on in Utah as a whole. Utah was a was a early adopter of of the P L C um P L C concept of improvement. And showing, we we've moved we've moved to the to the top. It's showing in this district. This district was an early adopter inside of the state of Utah for P L Cs. And uh I've heard I've heard people say it. I totally believe it, but the there's no longer, we don't have to wonder how to do better. We know what the methodology is. We just have to use it and then it's like any other thing. There's no silver bullet. There's no curriculum. There's no computer program. There's no device. None of that stuff is a silver bullet for achievement. What is the silver bullet of achievement is following the tenants of the P L C work that we do. And it just comes back to the hard work by our teachers, hard work by our kids, to winning attitude. I love it when Garrett talks about, you know, he says, I'm agnostic to textbooks. I'm agnostic to a lot of these things that come down the pipe. You know, there's this new fat out that we're all doing. What what he and his team look at are the numbers. And when there's a when there's a high performing, they're they they they're even studying for the whole entire B Y U public school partnership, five districts. I think they repre- I think it represents sixty three percent of the students in the state of Utah. These guys have permission. They have to go get permission from the State Board of Education and they have permission from the governing board of the B Y U partnership to look at all districts in in Utah County and Wasatch and Jordan. And they're identifying the highest performing teams in the whole partnership and then they're going to those teams and finding out what are you doing to be so successful. And it's never one curriculum. It's never one silver bullet. It's a combination of figuring out what works, working your tail off, setting very high expectations, making sure there's not one child in this district that their teacher doesn't think that they can do it, that they can knock it out of the park. They just need they just need um the these processes that we've identified apply. And uh I think it's so exciting. It's so exciting for us to be where we're at. We we dreamed about this day for a long, long time and it didn't come easy. In fact, there were some of those early years where we we just felt like we were spinning on wheels, but we're we're getting there and regardless of how the how the uh verified or validated scores are coming in, it's gonna be another good year for us. And we'll see what that looks like next October, but in August, we have all the teachers in the auditorium. We're gonna we're gonna have some fun and we're gonna celebrate and we'd love to have all the good ones for that day.
The date for that?
We have a date for that today?
No, it's gonna be very far. I still remember the date on the third floor around New York's main field. It's a long time ago.
It will again. You know, a lot of good things happened since then.
I guess it's about eight to nine when you're
Now you're in there. But the twelfth is new teaching training.
Oh, I think it's the thirteenth.
Yeah. Because the first day is
Thirteenth. Oh, yeah.
The third.
The Tuesday.
That's what you have to say.
And if anybody in this community says anything other than we live in Wasatch County, one of the top performing school districts in the state of Utah and in the entire country, if they say anything but, correct them. And if they wanna argue, that'll be some talking. I'll just I'll take them in my office one time.
He directly goes, I'm happy to report that my daughter succeeded in
That's a fast
We talked about all the opportunities.
Gotta have Todd give an update on that.
She signed up for ten fifty next year, so she'll do it. She'll follow through.
If there's uh if there's some time, I I think that uh we're running a do you wanna take two or three minutes about for the apps and come
Don't worry.
Do that. So something that's really exciting right now is that um statistically, we're tracking our goal. And the goal in applying for the Padaway extension was to get that to the great days of Wasatch High School when forty five percent of our students graduated with first year college math done. And so right now, we're tracking forty five percent. This year, we'll complete that ten ten and move on to the next step of the goal, which is a first year college math class their senior year. So starting this pilot with the junior class, that's now progressing to that junior class going to their senior year on track to um achieve that goal. And then the second thing I've that I report is that we have plans to exceed that goal exponentially. And the way we're going to start doing that is our math teachers that taught this year said the number one thing that inhibited inhibited students that did not have access to this program because they either did not sign up or they had grades that were not passing was their discipline in doing homework. So the course is a college level class and outside of class work is expected. And so the way that we would provide access to more students, and our target is one hundred, but we get sixty five to one hundred, that's still more students than participated this year. The way we will do that is by offering a course, an elective course for credit during the student's school day where they will have time to do homework supported by a certified math teacher. And so that's the way we're going to accommodate for students that were not achieving because they couldn't get their homework done. So I think we'll pick up, I guess, at sixty five to one hundred more students on this pilot by addressing that first intervention. So anyway.
It's a great break. You're doing really well. Our teaching and learning team approached the State Board of Education, asked for an exception. We would like to go back to, we we watched this new curriculum for how many years and it's not performed like it we promised it will. We wanna go back to doing what we we were doing previous. They let us. They trusted us. Wasatch County School District has a wonderful reputation with our state leaders, our state education league. They they know of a lot of awesome things along here.
Superintendent, unless in thirty seconds, I'll share this statistic that I I I learned this week from U V U that I that I thought I think is phenomenal. But their 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 data says that if they can get students to complete their first year college math class during their first year in college, then that student has a sixty five percent chance of completing their degree. If they don't get their first year college math done in their first year, that drops to twenty five percent. And so if we can send students to college with first year college math done, there's a high probability that they'll complete their post-secondary degree.
And the fact that it's already on the state transcript, if they if they want mission, if they choose to do something else for a year or two, when they when they come back to re-enter the state the state system, it's already on the transcript. They don't have to take a uh an assessment and start back over at math ninety nine.
I get it. I get it. I was that student in college that just didn't keep going because math you know, hit a wall.
Got over it.
I got over it.
Awesome. Anything else?
Thank you.
Thanks, Paul. Everybody, that's great. Um and uh I guess for uh for warm ups.
So the the dinner is kind of a face style. We'll let the board go first across the hall and get their plate and then head up to the office.